All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's El Dorado Regular City Commission meeting for June 15th, 2020. Roll call.
Mary Young.
Here.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Willis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
And tonight, for invocation, we have Pastor Tom Carruthers with First Christian Church. Thank you for being here. We've missed this, by the way. We've missed these indications.
We've been praying for you when we're president, but it's good to be back.
I appreciate that.
If you don't mind, I'd like to read a couple of verses out of Psalm 46 before I pray. Be still and know that I am God. I will be exalted among the nations. I will be exalted in the earth. The Lord of hosts is with us. The God of Jacob is our fortress. Can you please pray with me? Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the gift that we have to gather together as leaders of this community. And we welcome you into this space. We invite you here by the power and presence of your Holy Spirit to come and guide and direct this meeting. Father, we pray that you would raise us to an awareness of your presence and of your desire for how this meeting should be directed and the decisions that would be made here. We pray for your hand of blessing upon the commissioners and mayor, for all their officials here who are serving us. We pray that you'd bless them, bless their families. Father, we pray that you would guide and direct the business that would be conducted here. We pray that it would be honoring to you. And Father, in the midst of these uncertain days in which we find ourselves, we thank you that you have promised that you are with us every step of the way. We thank you that you are a good God, and we thank you that, that as we walk through this season, we thank you that you know the plans you have for us and that you have not left us now. And it is in Jesus' name and for His sake that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I see that we don't have any proclamations or recognitions tonight, so we'll move on into personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM of the Tuesday preceding the meeting. These presentations are limited to 10 minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only, and no action will be taken on that presentation. So tonight, we have a personal appearance presentation from El Dorado Main Street, Emily Cannell, The Annual Report.
I'm not Emily.
You're not?
I'm Steve Waite. I'm on the board of Main Street. And even though I prefer to have people like you look 20 years down the road, sometimes looking back and knowing where we came from is valuable. And so what we're going to do tonight is try to give you a little past, present, and then future of what Main Street has done. Nick, you don't even remember that, do you? Probably the old Roxy Theater, but...
Not the Roxy.
Years ago, we had a pretty thriving downtown. Everybody used to go down on Saturday night and sit in their cars and shop. And of course, that's all changed now. And one of the things that we recognized a few years ago in the 80s, and this was when you and I, your dad and I were on the board of the Chamber together, a lot of these things came about with that group. We're not all dead, just partially. So I heard that last time. I wanted to correct you, Nick. But anyway, the Chamber, at that point in time, everything was under the Chamber. We had an existing industry team. We had El Dorado Industrial Development for profit and not-for-profit. We had an Economic Development Advisory Committee to the City of El Dorado. And then they had an existing industry team that called on existing industry. We had Convention Visitors Bureau under the Chamber. We had the Retail Council, Housing Committee, Turkey Hunt, and we were spinning off Leadership Butler. We had 600 volunteers at that time. We had 250 people at our annual meeting in 1986 for the Chamber. And at that point in time, the board decided we needed to take a look at how we were doing things. And we hired a guy named Larry Danielson. And he basically came back with a citywide recommendation, told us to combine everything into El Dorado Inc. and spin that off. So we had one economic development group, which we did. Then the Retail Council. There were several ways we could go at that time. Main Street was one of them. It was a new program with the state. But when we started looking at the various things, we really didn't fit timing-wise with Main Street. So we formed what we called CAR. Scott?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And CAR was Community Action for Retail Revitalization. Fifty percent of our curbs looked like this downtown. Fifty percent of them were broken. We had an annual cleanup, and we went down there. And from in front of one business, we cleaned a pickup load of trees and shrubs that were growing. So there was a need at that time for something to happen downtown. So we did a lot of cleanup, the next one. And at that time, we started looking at Main Street and started looking at grants. And the city was able to help us get a grant, a community development block grant, is what it was called. And we did that in 98. And Scott was good enough to let me look up the file and see what that was. But that total project was a million three, and of that, a grant was for a million and $45,000. Then there was a benefit district, and the benefit district assessed 100 buildings and landowners $261,000. And so we did what you see here. We did the planters, we did the lights, we did the brick look. And believe it or not, I think way more than half of that went underground for things that the city needed, you know, water lines and whatever, that were improvements that were needed downtown. I mean, we still found a few places downtown where there was cavities under the sidewalks, and you could access them from the buildings. So, and another reason that we, let's go ahead to the next one. The monies that were available to us with CAR were very sparse. So we decided that we would do Main Street. So we applied for Main Street. And this was, it was a competitive thing, because you had to make application, and they would only take three, one to three new towns a year into that Department of Commerce program. So we were able to get into it. And one of the reasons is they had funds that we could get at. One of those funds, we used as an art scape. And we were the first one to have art scape, and that's the 16 statues that are around. And all of that was private donations that went with our CBDG grant, because that grant, we put in the pedestals for those, but they wouldn't supply money for that, so we had to raise that. And those are valued right now at $250,000. This is just an example of that. And then in 98, we became a Main Street community. And along with that went IWW funds. And IWW funds, that's incentives without walls. And these were programs that, again, competitive. We went to the state. Our people that wanted a loan, zero interest, had to apply statewide with all other Main Street cities. And then we would loan it to them at zero interest. They would pay it back, and the city got to keep that money. Well, we had a total of 13 loans. It had to be a one-to-one ratio. And what we did on that is about a sixth of one, actually, because we had 161,000 of those approved from the state, and a little over a million dollars was invested. And those projects, we had 180 rehabs up to 2014 that were 13 million, and 66 buildings that sold for $5 million. And we had 40,000 volunteer hours. One of the other things is you have a comprehensive plan that was done in 2009, but there was also a plan that was done by Hyatt Palma for downtown that the state paid for. They paid $24,000 for that. I doubt if anybody here has ever seen that. But it's a really good plan. They called out the need for downtown housing, you know, for retail revitalization. It was a really good plan. It was paid for by the Department of Commerce. Okay, I'm trying to hurry, because we have like five minutes apiece. But Hyatt Palma was also a very good document. I highly recommend. I went back and looked at the comprehensive plan and the Hyatt Palma today, and I would bet there's some interesting things in there. And then the next slide, we had designated in 2013, a National Historic District. There are 66 of 111 buildings that have the status that allows them to get historic tax credits and some other benefits. So that's another way that Main Street has leveraged the money. Then we also had a program that's the facade program, and basically trying to take back the buildings, not to exactly what they were, but something that's consistent with what they were in the beginning. And we, again, it was a one-to-one competitive thing, and we had $67,150 worth of those. And the total project was $374,000. So five times we leveraged the money that we got. And of course, that money came from the state. So other Main Street initiatives, Hope Grant, which you're going to consider one here in a little bit. We were instrumental in working with the city to close the street for the courthouse expansion. And that was really, you should have seen the statistics for what the courthouse does, the number of people that come to town every day, the meals they eat, the gas they buy. So we had to get that here, and the city was instrumental in closing that. Upper-story housing and downtown housing, again, the Danielson report pointed that out. And I think there's over 200 apartments now in the downtown area, and there were very few when Main Street started. So there's also neighborhood revitalization. You know about that, tax incentives. So Main Street's been able to leverage the money that we've been given by the city. And our contract with the city initially, as Main Street, was that the city would give us $90,000 a year. And, you know, we'd like to see some more of that back, Dave. And also, in reading our CBDG grant, you know, we've been talking about replacing some of the things downtown, like the trash containers and flowerpots. And we actually have a contract with the state that says we will do those things. So I just thought that was kind of an interesting note when I read through that. So thank you. I'll turn it over to Leon.
Is there any way to see their comprehensive plan?
We have a copy of it. We can get that to you.
Should be there. Once again, I'm not Emily, but I am Leon. So one of our keys was to develop short, long-term goals. Our long-term goals were basically established, if you'll notice, by 2024. To implement a plan developed in 2020, we did this in November this year, in conjunction with the city, business, building owners, and members of the community to make downtown pedestrian-friendly, motor-use, aesthetically pleasing destination, which preserves its historical character. Now, the key with this is, that's part of the plan that you're talking about, Gregory, that you wanted to see. So that makes a difference. So one of the things that happens is we have committed to 30 work plans under four major street pillars that we will use to reach out and reach that goal that we talked about. The first one is design. We have to understand how to design things. Please note that all of these also have their own budgets to determine that we make our expenditures what we want them to be based on how we're going to do things. You also have promotion. I'm the chairman of the promotion one. We have organization and economic revitalization. Anyway, something that makes a major role in keeping us on the way we want to go. Some of the main things we've done these last two years, really. If you look at it, we had the Old Fashioned Christmas event, very neat thing that happens. One of my favorites, though I have to admit, is the trick-or-treat down Main Street. If you've been to that last year, we had 3,000 kids and families down there, keeping these kids off the streets, going out dark nights, being able to go through, get candy, keep the families together in a nice atmosphere, working together. We finally actually had a situation where we had to locate a child, and within 10 minutes they found that child, reunited with mom and dad. The Sheriff's Department worked with us, so did the city police. Really neat deal. Now, one of the other major programs that we use at Main Street is a banner program. You'll see here, we have three different people who have served in the military. They've done their time in service, and this gives us a way to honor them, and it gives us a family a way to honor them by having their banners shown. That is one of the programs we have under Main Street. So also what we do, Steve showed you some of the buildings. You'll see the Before on this is this Gnosma Building over here that says Before. After, it looks, and you can see what it's done. Think about the appeal. But not only the appeal that goes with this, think what happens in terms of the property value and the taxes that might be raised when people come in and shop in these places that helps bring money into your coffers through the city. Also, you can look at Levis's Dry Goods there on the corner. Wade Wilkinson is doing the remodeling work on that. If you've been inside, there's a really neat little sign they discovered that had been covered up that talked about a billiards parlor that was there. So it's really kind of neat. It's yellow and black. But once again, here's a situation where the building was falling into disrepair. Main Street found a way to bring, Steve found a person together that was interested in for Wade to be able to work with him and purchase that building and turn it into something that's really going to be nice. Also, we have new construction. You can see the Edward Jones Building there that Mr. Banks built. Very nice. If you've been in there, nice building, nice group of people. We actually now have two Edward Jones, well, really, three Edward Jones offices in downtown El Dorado. Pretty neat thing. So one of the key things that happened to show you the significance is, the state came back this year, and they realized the importance of what can Main Street do for us. So through the Department of Commerce, they reorganized Main Street Kansas. Well, what's the benefit of that? Well, number one, we've already had two major training sessions. One was Emporia. If you've been to Emporia, you realize how good their downtown looks and the things they have going on there. Very big. Grants, you typically cannot get a lot of these grants unless you're 501(c)(3). That's where we fit in. That's how you get those grants. Sources of information and data, we can work with them. They have a lot of studies going out there. We can call if we have questions. It gives us somebody to talk to. They're also a strong advocate for the small downtown vitality, to make us go stronger and be a better community. So what goes along with that is working well with other people. One of our key partners there, you'll notice, El Dorado Inc., Sabre of Commerce, and the City of El Dorado. And the idea here is working together to make things better for everybody. We've seen that through the, yeah, you got it through, that's cool. One of the things that's happened, it just showed up on that next slide, you might as well go to it, that's okay, is what's happened with the stuff with the co-virus, where we've worked together on a grant that's being established to try and help people get along and take care of the thing that's happened there. We also have mutual goals we work together on. Quite often, they get together once a week. David's the member of our board. That way, we can make sure, David, sorry, apologize. That way, we can make sure that we know what the city wants us to do also and how we can work together. So what's the future? Well, we feel like the future is to continue to develop ways to enhance downtown in El Dorado and lead us into a bright and prosperous future. How do you get there? Well, we have 14 board members, very strong, active people. What's interesting is, last year, our volunteer hours were over 6,265. And if you put a pin to that, that would value out to $223,000 that came out of nobody's budget. That was people giving back to the City of El Dorado for what the City of El Dorado's done to us. One of the things I'd like to do real quickly is, I'd like to turn around, pardon me for a second, but if you've been touched by Main Street, would you mind standing up, please? I think this just gives us a good example of what we've done in this community over the years to give back to what the city's done for us. We tried to keep this short. Any questions?
All right, Leon, you guys gave us some really good information here. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leon. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Steve. Okay, that's all for personal appearances. Next on the agenda is public comment. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only. No action will be taken. Citizens with additional information for the city commission are always encouraged to contact City Clerk Tabitha Sharp for instructions on alternative ways of communicating with the city commission. So do we have anyone here tonight for public comment?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Lee White. I live at 938 West Third. I do have some documents to pass out to you tonight. So I spent a little time today talking with Matt Guthrie and Kendra Wilkinson about their upcoming effort to have a meeting with officials from across Butler County regarding the homeless situation. And I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about Boise Decision. This is the law of the land in the Ninth Circuit out west. You must allow camping on public property if no other, if there's no other place for the homeless to go. If you don't have a homeless shelter with beds, if you don't have a designated camping area, then they can camp on public property. So what happened is, in Longview, Washington, where we used to live, the homeless started camping in the park. So they banned tents and tarps, and so the homeless moved to the lawn at City Hall and literally surrounded it. Well, they made a temporary campsite at city expense of in excess of $2,000 a month. And that's about to close. The county ad hoc committee that was supposed to come up with another location basically just disbanded. They could not get over the "not in my backyard" syndrome on every site that they designated. So now it's looking like the homeless are going to be back, you know, camping around City Hall or other places around the community. It's a huge problem out there, because the weather's just warm enough that, you know, you can survive pretty well, and a lot of forest to hide in and so forth. You know, I really hope that the officials from around the county will take this seriously and take you up on this meeting, and I'm going to send them the information that I gave you. Because what happens in the Ninth Circuit, although it's not law here, it can be cited in a federal lawsuit, and a judge could apply it here. And that may happen if some organization such as the ACLU gets involved. So it's something that we need to be aware of. I've been dealing with the homeless issue on my Butler County, Kansas News Facebook page the past couple of days. It's been a struggle, but I'm going to talk to the folks at the Butler Homeless Initiative, and maybe we can deal with some of the issues that have been going on, some of the drama that's been happening on the page. So I thank you for your time this evening. I look forward to seeing what comes out of the meeting on the 23rd and trying to help get you connected with some people who might be able to help the community in that regard. Thank you.
Thanks, Leon. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here for public comment tonight? Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Terri Redabaugh, and I'm the president of the Butler Homeless Initiative. Like Lee and like many, we're very concerned about homeless people who live in Butler County. A couple of details I wanted to share with you, which most people don't know yet. We closed the shelter in March, because the Nazarene Church closed because of the virus and ended all programs. So it was necessary for us to close the shelter on March 17th, because of the district superintendent's directive to all of their churches. We intend to reopen September 1st. We're gradually, slowly, month by month, year by year, lengthening our shelter season. So we intend to open the 1st of September, which will help some of the issues that are of concern to people. And we intend to continue probably through the end of June in 2021. And after that, we intend never to close again. We will then, God willing, be a year-round shelter for people with nowhere else to go in Butler County. We do this through various grants, and much of it through the generosity of the community and of businesses and individuals here in El Dorado and in Butler County. We, this is, it's only possible because of the generosity and the devotion of many, many people and to whom we're all very grateful. So we look forward to working with you as you meet with mayors and city and county commission members about the issue of homeless people. It's not going to go away. It may be increasing now because of the economic downturn. I hope not. But we would very much look forward to working with you as we try to find ways to assist these people and help some of them get back on their feet and move back into productive life in the community. So thank you. Please call me if we can help you.
Can I make a clarification?
Me, I do too.
Please.
Go ahead.
Just a clarification, this meeting that we're planning on March 23rd is just step zero.
Oh, I understand.
I mean, basically, it's just cities getting together to determine if they're willing to form a coalition and moving on from there. So our first meeting, I mean, that is, that's the lowest rung, that's at ground level. And from there, we hope to move on up. So the involvement will only be the city people and not even the county, because we need to decide if we can even go to the county with what we have.
Well, we're here. Whenever you get...
That's good to know.
Whenever you get to the rung that you're ready, we will...
I just want it understood that this is not a major...
Oh, I actually did understand that.
This is just an information gathering.
Yeah. I knew you were just at the beginning, but I just wanted to stand with you on it.
Thank you. So our first meeting, I mean, that is, that's the lowest rung, that's the ground level, and from there we hope to move on up. So the involvement will only be the city people and not even the county, because we need to decide if we can even go to the county with what we have.
Well, we're here. Whenever you get-
That's good to know, that's good to know.
Whenever you get to the rung that you're ready, we will-
I just want it understood that this is not a major-
Oh, I actually did understand that.
Information gathering.
I knew you were just at the beginning, but I just wanted to stand with you on it.
Thank you.
Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that in order to have a homeless shelter requires a special use permit?
Yeah, so as your plans are shifted from more on a cold-weather shelter, temporary nature, we'll start having a discussion with us as staff. There is special zoning in place for transitional housing intended to be a year-round housing, so we can start having that discussion before, you know, the timeframe of the shelter being opened wide enough anymore. Would be great.
Yeah, we look forward to talking with you about it.
And I guess my question was, your facility that you're using right now, are you sure that it's appropriate for a full-time shelter? Okay.
What's your, tell me your concern about it.
I mean, in my mind, it's a temporary, it's a temporary shelter, it's not a permanent thing. And if you're going to have permanent, you're going to have a permanent, you know, twelve months a year, as you just said, I feel uncomfortable that you be, just being in a church. I'm not, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable with full-time having that in a house of worship at that point, because it's, then you're changing the purpose of that building. Personally, I don't want to speak for anybody else on this bench, I'm just, you know, you just surprised, I'm pretty sure you just surprised all five of us with that statement. So, because none of us are, none of us are understanding, I mean, I did not have the understanding that your plan was expanding beyond what you're doing right now.
That has been planned. We are in a church, we are in the basement, we do have offices, we have bathrooms, we have separate dorms, and in fact, the Nazarene Church designates us as one of their missions.
Okay, fair, and I get that.
And that's, that's how, that's how it all works. They have other mission fields, but we are one of the clearly stated mission fields of Pastor Debbie and the Nazarene Church.
Because as of right now, there is no permit for that through the city, is that correct? There was no vote upon?
Yeah, the zoning doesn't exist there today, don't allow it.
Okay, that's, I think that's where I was, I feel like it's already skirting the rules a little bit by not having a vote upon the commission, but if we start expanding, then that I-
But we're not expanding in terms of people or within the building.
We can visit with you about the transitional housing definition, definition of zoning?
I don't understand that one.
Yeah, yeah, there was a whole group put together with, to come up with that definition, because there wasn't even zoning that would allow such a thing a number of years ago. So we can visit, talk to you about the special use process-
We'd be happy to.
And how that will, how that looks and how that plays out.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
How many were you serving?
How many did we serve last season? We served seventy-five different individuals.
It's the average time of a length of time that you were open on?
I don't remember, actually. Some people, I know that the shelter manager has calculated that, but I don't frankly remember it. Some people we see for a night or two, some people we see for a few weeks, some people we see for a few months. People come in and come out, some are transient, some are locals, some are able to go back to families. It's a real, it's just, it's very mixed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Do we have anybody else here for public comment? Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have approval of City Commission Minutes from June first, approval of appropriation ordinance number zero five dash twenty in the amount of one million one hundred and sixty thousand fifty-three dollars forty-one cents. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
I have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion carries five o. I see that we don't have any old business, so we'll move on to agenda item number ten, consideration of the independent audit of the financial statements for a year ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Who's here to, I'm actually a step back from the water up here.
Okay, we have Karen Lynn with Ferberich and Trey Hand here to, well, on Zoom to talk to us. She can, she cannot see us, we can see her, and we should hopefully be able to hear her. Karen?
Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I'm going to turn you up a little.
Okay. Well, good evening, and I appreciate being able to present the audit this evening, and although I cannot see you, I am going to have to assume that when you have questions, that you will get my attention. I'm Karen Lynn, I'm the managing director of PT&amp;Co, and I would like to go through the results of the audit, and I'm assuming that you have the documents in front of you that are, there's two documents. One is the financial statements themselves, and the other is the report. It has the title, "The Report to the City Commission," and that is the one that I want to spend a few moments on, that does have the required communications to you and the results of the audit. So beginning of that document, I just passed the table of contents, starting with our responsibilities.
Karen?
Our responsi-, yes?
Sorry, we didn't receive the documents, Dusty said there were problems.
Oh, okay, I was not aware of that.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well-
So they don't have anything but David's letter, I believe, that goes in front of the cap, so you're-
Okay, okay, all right, well, I apologize for that, I was not, I was not aware of that. So I will just, I will go through that, then knowing that we do not have that document in front of you. So our responsibilities are to perform the audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. Those two sets of standards require that we plan and perform the audit with the ultimate goal of forming an opinion as to whether the financial statements are free of material misstatements. And so we were, performed the audit with that objective in mind, and we were able to form unmodified opinions that do state that in our opinion, the financial statements are free of material misstatements. Government auditing standards are because of the federal dollars that you receive, and those standards require us to do some additional compliance testing on federal contracts and other federal dollars, and the results of those, those testing were that we had no compliance findings that we needed to report. Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide also requires some compliance testing in regard to Kansas statutes, and those, that testing that we perform, again, did not have any issues or compliance findings that we needed to report. Other items that we report as a part of the, I'm sorry, that we audit as a part of the audit process include accounting policies and practices, and we look at those to determine whether accounting policies are consistently applied and appropriate for the circumstances. This year, there were two new Gatsby accounting standards that we did apply to these financial statements. One of them is Gatsby Statement Number Eighty-four, fiduciary activities. This Gatsby statement resulted in new guidance for identifying fiduciary activities and determining which ones are really considered to be agency funds or which ones are custodial, and really which ones the city does have control over the funds and which ones are really just pass-through. And also, the second one is Gatsby Statement Number Eighty-eight, certain disclosures related to debt, including direct borrowings and direct placements, and that statement required distinction in the footnote disclosures of which debt are direct placements versus those that are not. And so it's really just a disclosure that we included in the debt footnote. Other items that we review as part of the audit process are anything that is significant or unusual, if there's anything in the course of our audit that we identify, we would look at those items. Anything that is reliant on management judgment or would be considered to be a significant estimate, we also would take a look at those. And we do have several items that are considered to be management, reliant on management's judgment or to be considered to be an estimate, and those include the approved self-insurance claims, the water storage space, the net other post-employment benefit liabilities, and the net pension liability. So we review, in all of those cases, we review the accounting policy and management's estimation process, and in all four of those cases, we did come to the conclusion that the estimation process was reasonable. As a part of our audit, we did have some audit adjustments that were proposed by the audit through the audit process, and those audit adjustments were, we had some that were made to the financial statements and then some that were not made to the, to the, to the financial statements, they were proposed but not made. And so when we do resolve the issue of where the financial, why the financial statements didn't get presented to you, and they do get to you and you review them, you will see those adjusting entries in this packet, they are presented there for your information. The audit adjustments that we did identify and present in the financial statements did result in a significant deficiency, and we have had these deficiencies presented for the last couple of years. Our audit standards do require that when we do have significant adjusting entries, that we present a significant deficiency, and so we do have that to report again this year. We also would report to you if we have any disagreements with management or any issues related to the audit process, anything along those lines could indicate red, red flags of more serious issues, so we would be sure to bring those to your attention. We did not have anything along those lines that we need to bring to you this evening. Things like information that we requested that wasn't provided to us or just difficulties or disagreements or anything along those lines would have been brought to your attention much earlier than this evening. We did not have anything like that, we had great cooperation, information was provided timely, we were able to get all of our questions answered and information provided so that the report could be completed in a timely manner. So we do want to express our appreciation for Tammy Shaker and the entire team for all of the hard work and the information that they provide. There is a lot of work and a lot of information that's put together to present all of the information for the financial statements, and we do appreciate all that, all the help that we receive. The, we do also receive a letter, a management's representation letter, and this letter does have a lot of information in it related to the financial statements, and so when you do receive this report, we do encourage you to read through that. A lot of information that can help you as you read through the financial statements and help you understand the policies underlying the financial statements. So take a few moments when you have a chance to read through that, and hopefully that can help you as you read through and digest the financial statements. So with that, I would open for any questions that you might have about the, about the audit process or the conclusions related to the audit.
Karen, this is Nick Badway. Are the, these reoccurring significant deficiencies, are they always in the same area?
In terms of the audit adjustments? They, they generally are, I think a lot of them are related to capital assets. Many times, they're related to bonds, to things in the area of bonds. Sometimes, there's payables, and those are the main areas, I believe, that they are related to, so I would say, yes, they're generally in those main areas. And some of the, there are some adjustments that are not material, and those aren't really the ones that are, that are feeding into that particular deficiency, but the ones, generally the ones that do are in the area of the asset, the capital assets and the, and the bonds.
Are we going to have another discussion once we have the books to actually look at, or is this the only time we're going to talk about it?
Yeah, we can, for sure.
Because I would prefer to have something to look at.
Evidently, there was a miscommunication issue, I really, Karen doesn't know about it, but her, her staff, they were, they were sending the books and something happened, and they did not get here, and we found out, I think Thursday or Friday, that they would not be here. So, I thought you knew, Karen, I'm sorry.
Karen, Kendra Wilkinson, when we do get the information, will we also get a letter of what you told us tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
You will get two, two documents, one is the financial statement, which is a large document, and then a smaller document, which includes all of the conclusions that I just went through, is a separate document that has all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you all have anything else?
And if, when you have those in front of you, you would like to go through again with me, I would ask you to join again in another meeting.
Is your office, Karen, is it still right off Burlingame Road?
No, we actually moved on January first to Hunsun. So it's over a little bit farther on the, over on five four seven.
My mother-in-law lived on the corner of Thirty-third and Burlingame Road, but she's since moved, she's been down here at Eldorado for about four, three and a half years, so I used to see her sign up there all the time when we'd go up to her house, but I hadn't been up there for quite a while.
We merged with another, to pick the office on January first of nineteen, and because of our larger team, we actually bought a building and renovated it and moved so that we could all be under one roof, so now we are, we're over on Hunsun now.
Okay, I know where that is.
Karen, I appreciate it, I think we're looking forward to getting the final report and having an opportunity to review that, so.
And I can follow up on that and get with Tabitha and Tammy and find out exactly when you will have it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, have a good evening.
So-
Goodbye.
So do we have, we have an opportunity for a motion here to accept the audit, but do we need to do that today or can we wait until we have the audit?
I would recommend to table it, and then when you have the documents.
So I need a motion to table this until we have an opportunity to do the audit.
I move we table this until we have an opportunity to do the audit.
Thanks, buddy. The motion is second, is there any further discussion about that? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. Next on the agenda, if I can get back up to the top here, agenda item number eleven, consideration of a special use permit for proposed home-based salon at, does that say one eleven?
One eleven.
One eleven, Hugabum Drive.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, Nathan and Susan Dick are requesting this special use permit to allow the, in the home air salon. Their property is located, you'll see the yellow line around their residential structure there on South Hugabum Drive. Just a few things, home occupations are, the person must live in that home or reside there to be able to have an occupation in that home. A big part of home occupations are, they can't create noise, odor, just not fit in within the neighborhood. So there are a few, just as a background, there's a few home occupations that are just allowed by right. Some of those include professional services, offices, daycares, music lessons, those sorts of things of that nature. And within our zoning regulations as adopted- Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 28th and voted recommending approval four to one. I'll stand for any questions you may have.
So, so by rights, you can give trombone lessons, but you, but you have to have a special use permit to cut here.
You can give trombone lessons to no more than five kiddos.
I know, but it's not create noise. I mean, those are pretty loud. Trumpets or.
Yeah.
Scott, I noticed that we received, or the planning commission received a letter.
Yes, from the manager of the hotel that's adjacent to the east, correct?
I personally did not realize we had a Hugaboom Drive in El Dorado. So I went looking for it. Didn't realize it was so easy to find, but I found it. And so I drove it. Besides their concern about truck traffic, did the planning commission see any problem with that?
The, one item that came up is Hugaboom Drive is not actually a city street. It is not a public right-of-way similar to like your country club and lane. So a lot of the concerns brought up in the letter by the manager of the hotel, you know, that is not the city's road to maintain. We do have infrastructures as far as water and sewer that goes through that corridor. There was a little concern with the planning commission about that not being a public right-of-way, but really our message to them, that is, that is between those individual property owners. We're talking about allowing an in-home hair salon, basically, and the rights of ingress and egress are amongst those property owners throughout that whole area.
Well, my driving it, I didn't see where the problem was, but.
One thing that, you know, the home oc, occupational rules, they, you know, it can't create traffic above normal residential volumes. However, like for a barb, barber and beauty salon services, there is not required additional parking on that site. That's not a requirement. It could be a condition that the planning commission recommended, but they did not recommend that.
Well, one beautician, one customer.
Yeah, the, the owners shared that it would be a weeknight, weekend, one person in, one person out, slow volume. Really with the, the current zoning in the area, generally all commercial, and you have this one island that's residential there, it, it's unique. I mean, because it's not like it's disrupting, a home occupation disrupting a neighborhood or, or something changing with a bunch of houses around.
I think the one thing that I really have to say about all of these that were going over the day is that it really would have been nice to have the planning commission's minutes. I went to the website, couldn't find any of the minutes for that happen this year. So we didn't get them. They weren't in the email, they weren't in the email, just.
Well, I checked, I've read them, they were on the agenda that was emailed out and they're in my packet.
Is that, was the revised one?
I believe that what we did, I think they're all included in the, in the, so what we need to do is staff is break it all out, put the minutes with each specific item.
I apologize, Commissioner, yeah, we, we need to do that.
They still have the planning commission on TV though, right?
Yeah, that's how I got my data. I went through that, through the videos.
We start on page 81 for you.
81?
Yeah.
So there won't be any retaliation for the owner of the hotel to block the street if we pass this, since it is on his property?
Well, I mean, that home has existed there since the 50s, 1958, I think, was when it was built. There's definitely prescriptive rights, I would imagine, amongst the owners to allow ingress and egress to those. It has been split up since then. Parcel lines have changed. The owners are aware. Owner of the hotel, Sunny Stop, Mr. Pyle, who owns a vacant property just to the west of Hugaboom Drive, and the Dicks family is as well.
But their little section doesn't really interfere with anything at Sunny Stop or the motel. I mean.
They are, they are south, south of there. And they have their own private driveway into their property.
What's going to be the ordinance number?
G 1327.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move the case number 218-03-SUP, requesting an SUP for a barber or beauty shop services at 111 South Hugaboom Drive, and that ordinance number G 1327 be approved.
So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, Tabitha.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes. Next item on the agenda. Agenda item number 12, consideration of a special use permit for accessory apartment at 3625 Southwest 10th.
Yes, this is within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. This property is located outside the city limits. The applicant is requesting this special use permit to build what we consider by our definitions an accessory apartment. They are building a, another home on the property. You can see that their proposed location of that home is right up against Southwest 10th, which is Towanda Avenue. You know, the accessory apartment must be detached from the principal single-family unit. Staff recommended approval. Planning Commission held a public hearing May 28th and voted five to zero for approval. Butler County also reviewed this request and recommended approval as well.
Any questions for Scott? I just want to say, I really feel like we cleaned up this extraterritorial process since the last one. Thank you for doing that and getting it streamlined and much more effective. I agree with that, man. With the letter from the county first, I really, I'm happy we've done what we've done, so thank you for that. Do I have a motion?
Number, please.
G 1328.
I move to approve case number 20-04-SUP, requesting an SUP for accessory apartment at 3625 Southwest 10th Street, and that ordinance number G 1328 be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion or questions? Roll call, Tabitha.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes. Motion carries five oh. So next on the agenda, agenda item number 13, consideration of a special use permit for a campground at 1139 Southeast Blue Stem Road.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, this, this is an area that you've seen two cases here recently. The applicants, Natalie and Tim Donches, are requesting a special use permit to allow campground on their property. This property is currently zoned manufacturing mobile home park within this yellow area here where they're requesting the special use permit. And what that would allow them to do is, is create up to 57 RV parking locations. The planning commission held a public hearing on May 28th and voted five to zero to recommend approval. Butler County also recommended approval on this request as well.
So we're talking about the yellow, not the red?
Correct. The, the red, they did give a special use permit to allow that to be an expansion of the existing campground in this area. If memory serves me correct, Tim Wright?
Fine, yeah.
And these are currently mobile homes?
Correct.
And they're going to do a wave of these to create a campground?
If you'd like the applicant to answer, I think their intent is to leave some of them in their existing.
Come on in, Tim.
Come.
Tim Donches, 2873 Southeast US Highway 54 over to Kansas. Yes, prior history to this, there has been RVs in this from the prior owner. There was actually a letter from the county that allowed RVs to be in this already, in this location, but we are looking at increasing that number. And so that's why we're here today, because we're, we're planning on increasing that volume. Our tenants that are currently there, in which this picture is not up to date, there's a lot of the, there's, there's, I think, six trailers we've already taken out of this lot this spring. But the tenants that are currently there are going to be left to stay if they wish to. They're all on month-to-month leases. If, you know, at any point in time they decide to leave, we're leaving that choice up to them. We didn't want to put them in a position to force them out. So we're fine with the coexistence of, of, you know, having some mobile homes there, but the long-term goal is it'll eventually all be RVs. So, but anyway, that's the plan.
Baby steps.
Yep, it's a succession.
Have you, have you, how did the other project come? Is it done yet?
Not yet. So the problem was, okay, once we got approval here, we had three, three properties that came available just right after that.
Yeah.
And so we've been working with the county. We've actually hauled, we've, we've demoed 25 mobile homes so far in three parks, and I'm actually, we're starting two more this week. And so actually, that kind of got, got put on hold because we looked at the priority of cleanup of these other parks was important to take care of first thing this spring. The infrastructure with this park is, is already in place, and so it's a real, it's a pretty easy transition, quite frankly. It makes, it makes, it makes perfect sense to make it part of what we currently do since we do border it. We want it to be part of our operation. It just makes sense for us.
You think of connecting all one big park?
Yes, absolutely, that's the idea. This will, this will have a, the access to this park will actually be through our existing park, so we won't be bringing traffic through Blue Stem Road. It's going to come off of the highway like we currently do and come through into this park and tie it into what we call a loop system, which generally like you see at the Eldery State Park, those are loops, and that's general design of an RV, RV park, is to keep that traffic for the most part within the park and have limited entrances and exits so that way you can manage traffic.
Well, I already know you're, you're up against, so, you know, good luck to you, sir. I'm glad to see you clean that part up, though. Thanks, Tim. Do I have a motion?
1329. I move to approve case number 20-05-SUP, requesting an SUP for campground at 1139 Southwest Blue Stem Road, and that ordinance G 1329 be approved.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, Tabitha.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries five oh. Agenda item number 14, consideration of the award of bids for CDBG commercial project at 142 North Main Street.
Yes, this project consists of the rehabilitation of 142 North Main, the old farmer home building, District 142, as it's gone by as well. There was able, able to secure CDBG grant through their commercial rehabilitation program. Specifically what this project will look at is fire suppression for the building.
So what are you doing on the second floor?
Second floor is more of a phase two. Part of the plan of the fire suppression is to add a restaurant and so on to the second floor. Right now, it won't have access without an elevator for ADA accommodations, so that limits the ability for the second floor at this point. But in our next phase, that's the first thing we want to address is elevator going into the second floor and then eventual third floor.
You're not sorry you started this mess, are you? Okay, good.
Enjoyed it.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
He has, and if you get the opportunity to go in there, he's made a significant investment already today, and appreciate what he's done and the steps he's going forward to preserve that building.
Yes, those can be creative.
Do I have a motion? I move to accept the bid of Martz, Martzolph, is that, how you say that? Martzolph Enterprises in the amount of 32, $325,504.34 for the rehabilitation of 142 North Main Street, request sole source bid approval from the state Kansas Department of Commerce, subject to meeting the requirements of the CDBG Commercial Rehabilitation Grant Program.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Next on the agenda, number 15, consideration of the vacation of public right-of-way within the Holes Edition.
It's Mayor, Commissioner, Commission, we had a request from the owner of the property at 1006 North Taylor Street to consider vacating the alley, which is in their rear yard. Holes Edition was platted in around 1918. A lot of plats of that timeframe set aside public right-of-way or alleys in the rear. So from time to time, we will find an alley that is, does not function as an alley, has served no purpose as a public right-of-way. In fact, for our encroachments, fences, sheds, constructed over. And so we consider vacating that alley. So if, if approved, this ordinance approved, what that would do would, then the alley is 16 foot wide, so eight foot would go to the east side of it, and the other eight foot would go to the west side of it, and it removes that public. foot would go to the west side on it, and it removes that public right-of-way. Those adjacent owners would own that real property with an underlying easement to provide utilities and drainage across that same 16 feet.
Pretty standard move.
Correct. We sent letters to all the owners in, in that block. I did go out and visit with the owners of 1012 North Taylor. They were, they wanted to share their concern that their property taxes would increase based on owning more land. I talked to the county advisor to kind of get a ballpark of what she thought that might do to their property taxes, and her best estimate was, without the value of the structure changing, potentially $10 a year in additional taxes because of that property. So they wanted me to share that concern with you all, and they did not want to pay any higher taxes because of this. There's really not anything the city can do to prevent, prevent that with the tax situation. I did share with those owners, though, the reason we consider getting rid of alleys and things like this of their nature is their, their fence is constructed down the center of the alley as it's provided today, and, and not that this commission or even future commissions may consider, but that is public property, and there could be a request to pave an alley from an adjoining, from an adjacent, and, and costs associated, so. I guess the staff sees that it's a benefit to both the adjacent property owners and the city, but they didn't want to share that they were against this. And if so, they have the right to file petition after this and go through that, and you guys can set a public hearing with them and, and go that route.
So this was initiated by a request from one of those property owners. Have a motion.
Is that ordinance number going to be 1330?
Yes.
Okay, I moved to adopt ordinance number thirteen, or G 1330, an ordinance vacating an alley in Holes Edition to the city of Eldorado and reserve a permanent utility.
Second. Have a motion, and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote.
It's not a roll call vote on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm, I should have missed it.
I have a pure call, though. Okay, roll call, Tim.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Motion carries five up. Agenda item number 16, discussion of revocation of a special use permit at 105 North Arthur Street.
So City Commission, this is the special use permit on 105 North Arthur that you had requested a discussion on, and it goes to non-compliance, which is special use requirements. Just want your attention, I believe at the last meeting, that the applicant of the special use permit had relocated vehicles from the property to the public right-of-way, and you had asked that he be present, and so he's here to answer any questions you may have. I, I don't know if there's any other thing we need to talk about with respect to the revocation process, if you'd look at that.
Yes, so to revoke an SUP, you have to find a violation of the SUP, and what portion of the SUP is being violated. You also have to notify that applicant or that individual that you're considering removing it. There's, there's really three ways an SUP can be expired. One is that use doesn't continue for 12 months, so no one's doing that special use anymore. The commission itself can revoke and give a determination how they're violating that special use permit. And the third is just by sunset, so it's the same as the use of not continuing. It can be sunsetted, the transfer of ownership, and, and the property, the use of the property changes, but it still falls within the current zone.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to take this on. I went back and looked at the minutes. My motion, and I'm going to go ahead and read the whole motion, so we all, I move to approve case number 1906 SUP, requesting SUP for vehicle storage yard with the following conditions: property must be screened with an eight-foot privacy fence in the front edge of Arthur Street, and with a minimum six-foot privacy fence along the remainder of the property as proposed by the applicant. And, number two, the vehicle storage area must be limited to the screened area, and that, and that ordinance number G 1312 be approved. Nick Badway have a second to it? Everybody voted for it. I went back and looked at the video. When I looked at the video, I asked you, right here, are you okay with that? And you said yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay? You have not, you have not kept up your end of the bargain. You, let me finish first before, because I've got a lot to say to you right now, okay? I went up against my city engineer, trying to get it to where you can have all of this and, and function the way that you wanted to function, because you were getting in trouble, because you were, you were not, you were not doing what you're supposed to do. I bring this up. They come talk to you, and then you tell the staff, well, screw it, I'm going to put it, park it on the street because I can do that, okay? That's completely against the, your tone that you were up here when I was approving this on November 4th, okay? So at this point right now, I'm the person, after watching your car sit out there and sit out there after I made this motion, and I'm the one that I proved I wanted this on this agenda to revoke it. You, sir, did not keep up your end of the bargain. I did.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Try to explain it to me.
Okay, first of all, I'm going to apologize. We did have, my roommate's father passed away, and we had to take all of his stuff out at one time, and they brought it all to my shop. We sorted it, and it became a mess, and we finally sorted through and got most of it out. And I did have a Honda that sat there with a flat tire, because every time I tried to go to Walmart after this, the tire center still isn't. So I ended up just getting a tire off Craigslist, mounted it by myself, not balanced, just so it's inflated, legal, able to be moved vehicle. And it may have been my misunderstanding, but I thought that anything that was legally licensed was allowed to be parked there, and...
Not when you have an SUP, and you agreed to it.
Correct, and I thought that we had discussed that during that, that as long as they were legally licensed and insured in legal vehicles, that they could be parked.
But not when you agreed to a different set of rules.
Well, I thought, because we discussed...
Okay, yeah, fine, you can park them on the street, but, but you can't, you can't keep your SUP with something you agreed to.
I thought that any vehicle storage, as was defined, was anything that was non-operable to be screened. I thought anything that was...
We wanted, we gave you an S, we wanted you to get an SUP because we didn't want to see your stuff sitting out in front. We wanted it behind the fence, and that's why the people vote, that's why the two commissioners on the planning commission voted against it, because they didn't want to see it either. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, that was the whole reason to hold the eight foot, so we didn't see the camper.
Correct, and the camper is to move to my driveway because we're actually out using it.
Of course, great. Is that time of year?
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, and I just thought, because they were legally licensed and I was using them, that I, they could be parked there, and that was my misunderstanding, because I was like, well, I thought anything legally licensed is, if it wasn't a normal driveway, could be parked.
Trying to hide it. They were, were trying to hide what you have. Does that make, I mean, and I, you were, you were 100% agreement November 4th.
Yes, and, and I understand that, and like I said, because I thought that was actually brought up during the thing, this, well, if they're legally licensed, could they still be parked there? And I thought that that was brought up, that yes, it could.
Just a question, so are you talking about your drive, like your license that you're driving?
They're all licensed, correct, yeah, and I can drive them, correct.
Not a project vehicle, something?
Correct, yeah, all my project vehicles are behind it. They're all legally licensed, drivable vehicles.
But you were running basically a used car lot at that before we put the fence up. You had all these cars packed in there, it was out to the street, you had them on the street. That's why you had to come to us, because that, that was, that was the whole catalyst of this. The purpose of the fence was to get you behind the fence, so your neighbors didn't have to look at the used car lot, right?
Correct.
That's what started all of this.
Yes, it's because I had several that were, you know, dilapidated, they were projects, and they were, they were not fully functional, they weren't, you know, drivable, that sort of thing, so yes.
But we're trying to hide that, so your, your neighbors don't have to mess with it.
Correct, and, and...
This is my, I mean, and I was the guy that was playing, playing with you on this, trying to get this done, so I'm perturbed.
Yes, and I understand, and that, I mean, I, like I said, I admit it was my miscommunication, misunderstanding, that I believed that, you know, because they were legally licensed, that I could still park them there, because I thought that was brought up, because, you know, obviously it's not, and, you know, because I was trying to avoid also taking the neighbor's spot just because they were legally licensed.
I get it.
So that's why I had them parked there, and that's why I had them, you know...
Less projects, I think, is probably the best...
And I have, I've eliminated quite a few projects, and, you know, slowly as they go, and I've taken quite a few out of there, I have reduced the number, I mean, I've got a few trailers there now, but they've got lawn mowers on and stuff like that, so...
So can you bring yourself into compliance with the SUP?
Yeah, I mean, I think I've currently got one truck parked on the lot because I've been using it to tow a trailer.
Will we give him, will we give him the opportunity to bring himself up to speed on the SUP?
Because I can literally drive it out and tonight, park it.
My concern is with Hogwild and with the property that's adjacent, they're trying to sell that, and with him having his cars all out in the street, I was dumber by Hogwild, and it was hard to get around with all his cars out there on the street.
And, and if he fails to abide by his SUP, then I say yes, cancel it. But I say we give him the opportunity to bring himself into compliance, 30 days, whatever, two weeks, tomorrow, you know?
Like I say, I literally...
Whatever you want to do, and if he can't do it, then...
Listen, he, he took my, he took my body blows. I'll give him a break.
Thank you. 30 days?
30 days.
Mayor?
Is that doable?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Like I say, I can literally go there tonight and that truck, I mean...
Well, I mean, I guess my point is, it sounds like that he's in full, I mean, I understand the concerns, I mean, we had this discussion, it sounds like he's in compliance. I mean, there's a vehicle that he's driving is parked in a driveway, which I think we all tend to do when we drive the vehicle into our house. I mean, that's, that's different than projects, that's different than, you know, your projects, being sitting, you know, sitting outside the fence, so if this, yeah, it sounds like he's in compliance now. He's got, he's got a pickup there, the truck there that he calls for.
So shall we give him two weeks just to be on the safe side?
Sure.
And on day 15, Commissioner Guthrie will drive by?
I'll drive by every day.
So mark your calendar.
Just ask her back there, she'll know.
I will go move that truck tonight, you can drive by tonight after noon, it will be out in the street.
Thank you for coming and talking to us.
And I think the key thing is not just compliance, but completing it forward.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, staying in compliance. I mean, the bottom line is, the whole, the premise behind the conversation about the special use permit was so that you could have, be able to do some project work in that house, but not have all your projects sitting out in front of the house and like spilling out into the street in the neighbor's yards, right? So as we put the fence up, you do your work in the backyard or behind the fence.
Yeah, I do my work in the back.
Now, again, I fully understand that as you drive over there to do your work, you're going to park a car in the driveway, because that makes sense, unless you choose to walk. So I, I get that there's going to be a car in the driveway, but project cars and junk and clutter, that's what needs to, needs to go behind the fence.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Do you want to vote on this?
I think there's consensus.
Or are you just going to give it?
I think we're good.
So you got a four to one consensus?
I don't think we need to vote at this point in time. The SUP is what it is right now, and you're not choosing to remove it.
We're not, I mean, unless you'd like to make a motion to revoke it, if that's the plan, then we can go on that. If somebody wants to make a motion to revoke the SUP, then we can go on that path. Give her two weeks.
I would say, just, you've been warned. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Which brings me to my complaint. I would like to see the SUP on Ross Stumpf's Used Car Lot downtown. So if you could email me a...
I'd like to see it too.
Brief.
Little, little difference, you know, his was a rezone to allow car sales lot.
But he was...
Mr. Kings was a commercially zoned property that had a lot of vehicles, and, and it's, and it, the special use permit was to allow, should be considered a vehicle storage area behind the screen, behind the fence.
But I don't believe Ross has the ability to park trucks on the street that have dealer tags, or a car without any tag whatsoever.
You, you know, it'd be one thing with his property down there, if there were cars parked with for-sale signs, and, and he was actively engaging in the, in selling vehicles out of the, out of the right-of-way versus, just like Mr. King said, driving or vehicles getting moved around. There are a lot of vehicles that park down there, I know that, but I know the police has looked at it and looked to make sure they're tagged and licensed appropriately and they're operable.
Well, I know for a fact, last Friday when I drove by, there were two trucks with dealer tags, and there was one car with no tag, and on the north side of the building, there was another truck with a dealer's tag. That's on public right-of-way.
Yeah, but those are, like, those are legal tags, right? Dealer tag's a legal tag. You drive to California with a dealer tag.
There was a while, and I think he'd, he'd had discussions with the code enforcement when, when they were aware of for-sale or, you know, things on the vehicle's windshield when they were parked on the street, having discussions.
Are you still treating the street like parking, like a used car lot?
Yeah, we just, we don't, within municipal code, which talks about parking on streets and things like that, there's, you know, nothing that really restricts, you know, parking a vehicle that's licensed and operable on a city street unless there's a time limit or, or those sorts of things, or there's no parking restrictions.
Basically, it amounts to the fact that he pulled one over on the city commission.
We could go put, we could go put one out of parking signs down there. It wouldn't get in the...
It's okay, Scott. It's okay.
Two hour.
Well, all you have to do then is just switch places.
Yeah, but you got to do it every two hours. That could get old.
Well, there's one down there that's been there for over a year. Yes, it has a tag.
How many two-hour timeframes you're in a year?
A plethora.
Do the math, quick.
A plethora, yeah.
A plethora, okay. All right, moving on.
I wanted to use, I just wanted to use that word.
Is that your word for the day?
So that's all that's on the regular agenda for new business, and so we can move to agenda item number 20, reports, city commission and advisory board updates. Do you have anything you'd like to talk about, Commissioner Wilkinson?
I would like to hear from Kevin. Is that okay?
You donating your time to Kevin now?
I am donating my time to Kevin.
Mayor, Commissioners, what would you like to hear from me specifically?
We had, we started a conversation Wednesday night at the work, study session, the work session, about the events for 4th of July, both the daytime celebration and then potentially kind of the structure of the, of that evening as well. There were only three of us commissioners in attendance at that work session, and we weren't, you know, able to really kind of make a full-on decision, full-blown decision or give you any direction. So I'm guessing that's what you want to talk about.
Yes, I want him, I want him to talk about his memo on the activities that you are...
What your thoughts are for the fourth, and then you've got a full commission here that can make some good direction.
And I'll go first.
Are you ready?
No, I'm ready for you.
All right.
Your turn.
We would like to take a look this year at changing the 4th of July event and structuring it more as an evening event to handle, to happen at Hamlin Field and McDonald Stadium, beginning at approximately 5:00 in the evening, with some family activities and games at Hamlin Field. Move that toward McDonald Stadium somewhere around the 6:00, 6:15 timeframe, provide our typical meal that we do on 4th of July, hot dogs, chips, things of that nature, in a box lunch. uh, in a box lunch, box dinner capacity. And, uh, we're working, trying to get some ice cream as part of this deal as well. Uh, we don't have that confirmed yet. And then follow that up with a baseball game at McDonald Stadium at about seven thirty, which would have a couple of youth teams from Eldorado playing until nine fifteen, nine twenty, where then we would be prepared for fireworks display to happen. So, change, uh, moving away from East Park and doing the daytime activities to trying to do things closer to McDonald Stadium in conjunction with the baseball game. Still in development on some of the activities, but as you can see, we have some things kind of figured out at this point, but it's still in development, pending direction from you.
Well, I personally want to apologize to you for last Wednesday night. You came to us asking for direction and comment and concerns about the July Fourth celebration. And the three of us kind of went off in our own directions. And you didn't get what you came to us for. And so, I apologize that you didn't. But obviously, you've receded without us, which is a good, good deal.
They don't need us, Kevin.
Huh?
They don't need us.
Yeah. I will be quite honest, I am one of those that is, is very concerned about COVID-19. Uh, I am of that age group and with an underlying medical condition. And I am concerned about crowds. Uh, I have also see where the cases in Butler County is up by one. But the last report given to the county commissioners was that there were forty cases in Butler. There were three hospitalizations, five in isolation, and five in quarantine. Now, those numbers may have changed since the county commissioners heard it. But again, it is an increase. And I go shopping at Walmart, and I don't know why I even bother to dig the mask out of my purse. They're in the soul, but, but the associate's wearing masks.
I wear mine when I'm in there.
Good. Well, I haven't seen you there, so... But, I mean, it bothers me. It truly concerns me. And cases are not going down, they're going up. Cases among children are going up. It's a different type of response to COVID than, than, um, adults get. And so, I'm concerned about the closeness. Now, I'll be quite honest, I did some additional research, looking up pros and cons of outside activities. And it's either way to the left or, yeah, way to the right. And there doesn't seem to be any compromise in between. You either do it or you don't do it. So, I emailed Jamie Downs, head of the Butler County Department of Health. And I, and this is my email to her. I said, "On Monday night, we are having to make the decision as to whether to have the July Fourth celebration at East Park. Does Eldorado have any more coronavirus cases other than what you reported at the last Butler County Commission meeting? Do you have any recommendations or concerns, one way or the other, on, uh, Fourth of July activities? P.S. Don't envy you your job one bit." This is her response to me. First of all, thank you for the P.S. In all my twenty-seven years, I have seen nothing like this, and some days I feel ill-prepared. So do I. So do you. So do we. We all feel ill-prepared as to what to do and just hope we make the right decision. Under COVID-19, we have had no new cases in the county since June one. David reported an extra one, uh, in his Friday report. We thought we would have a lot of positives because of Memorial Day and the number of people at the lake. Even the Lake of the Ozarks incident didn't have the number of positives that were expected. There were some positives, just not what they expected. Some are beginning to think being outside may reduce the rate of transmission. By July Fourth, we will be into the phase out in the ad-aster plan with the goal of getting back to some normalcy. Yeah. As always, my concerns are large crowds without social distancing. I am concerned with the increase in cases in surrounding counties, specifically Sedgwick, and people who travel for these events. All that being said, I would recommend that if you decide to hold the events to allow for social distancing and encourage face masks, if that cannot be done, you may consider having hand washing stations or hand sanitizers available. In the end, we are all responsible for our own preparedness, hand hygiene, social distancing, and wearing a mask. And for the public, I'm going to say that again. In the end, we are all responsible for our own preparedness, hand hygiene, social distancing, and wearing a mask. I wear a mask when I'm out to protect you all. I see nothing wrong with asking you all to wear a mask to protect me. It's called social responsibility. It is something that every citizen in Eldorado should practice, and that is the social responsibility for other people besides just yourself. I am off my soapbox. I know how I'm going to vote. Thank you.
Any questions for Kevin?
So, are you going to make a motion not to have it then?
No, I'm not. I'm going to vote for it. If people will practice social responsibility, which is up to them. It's their choice to make, as it is my choice to make. But, you know, I think about this. I see a stoplight. I don't just keep going because I, might hit somebody. I would hope that I would stop so I didn't hit somebody. And I would hope they would do the same thing, that they wouldn't run a stoplight and hit me. So, it's kind of a two-way street here. And I, I do not think that that is too much to ask of people to take in consideration other people besides themselves. Social responsibility. Now, I'm off my soapbox.
You sure, you sure, Ms. Taylor?
I'm, I'm sure. You can bring up something else. I'll, I'll talk to it, you know?
Well, thank you.
I just think it's, I think it's important for kids to be able to have a Fourth of July celebration. It's important for families. We put on an awesome firework, uh, show. As much as I hate fireworks, P.S., but hopefully by July Fourth, the state of Kansas is in, in better position case-wise. Maybe some people will actually listen to what I said about being socially responsible and wearing a mask. But no, I will vote for it.
So, Kevin, I appreciate the work. Thank you, Kendra. Kevin, I appreciate the work you guys have put into this. We, to Kendra's point, I too apologize. I mean, we, we were short, kind of shorthanded a little bit Wednesday night and couldn't give you clear directions. So, in, in true, um, Eldorado staff fashion, you ran forward and tried to find the right solution. I appreciate that. It seems, it seems to me like the, the kind of proposal or the thought process that you guys have put together does create some, some limits for us, you know, kind of, and, and kind of brings us into an environment that's a little easier to control. Um, I appreciate that. I think that it's great just to take it all down to Hamlin Field. There's ways for those areas to spread out there. Uh, Mac Stadium, I, I forwarded David an email last week, I think. Um, I'd gotten an email from Neil Butman with Celebration of Freedom. Usually, uh, when the Broncos have their Fourth of July baseball game, Celebration of Freedom puts together a Veterans Recognition Night. Neil had emailed me and just said, "Hey, we're not going to be doing that because the Broncos aren't playing this year." I would encourage you guys to reach out to Neil and the Celebration of Freedom Committee. Um, I think it's a great opportunity for the evening of the Fourth of July, as we do watch the fireworks, celebrate our Independence Day. It's an opportunity to do some veterans' recognitions as well. So, I would encourage you guys to kind of add that to the, to the list of all the awesome things that you're planning on doing that night. I'm glad that, that, uh, that you're continuing some activities and, and that we're trying to get a baseball game going for that. To Kendra's point, uh, look, it's, everyone, we all have to have some personal responsibility in everything that we do. If, if, if at any, at any time, um, as an individual or as a family, you're not comfortable going to Walmart or going to Mac Stadium for this, or going to the swimming pool, then don't go. Uh, I mean, I get that. I understand that. There's, um, there's no, I mean, you know, I would say the only, the only difference with, with the red light scenario is that the red light is a law. There's no mandate today. There's, there's, um, there's some conversations certainly to, to be had about social responsibility, but there's no mandate today for, you know, for wearing a mask. There's no laws out there for that. So, I would tell people just to be conscious of, of, um, you know, those around you and, and of your own well-being as well. But with that...
Go ahead.
But with that being said, you know, we have, um, spent a significant portion of this spring and summer with different levels of government entities, um, telling us where we can go and what we can do and what we have to wear and what we're supposed to do. And I think that, as I mentioned Wednesday night at our, at our work session, um, as it pertains to this weekend, as we get in, move into July and the phase-out period of, of Governor Kelly's plan, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to pile onto that. I'm not personally comfortable piling onto that, uh, which is what brings us here tonight to be able to have this discussion. Um, I'm in favor of consider changing, uh, some, some of these changes to this year's Fourth of July celebration. I, I, again, I commend you, this, and staff, and the work that your group and your staff has done to kind of put together some ideas on how to make this work, um, solution-oriented. City staff is one of many great things about being able to serve up here and work with, with the staff that we have. So, I appreciate that work.
I've never watched the fireworks from inside the stadium. I usually come over here. But when they shoot the fireworks, do we let people out in the outfield?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know.
Kids love it.
Okay. I, yeah, I was going to say, have them bring blankets if you want.
Stadium, stadiums for...
Yeah, I mean, they can get...
Oh, yeah. Kids think that's awesome.
Okay. See, I didn't know. Now I know.
The more you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm cool with it.
The more you know, the more dangerous you are.
Other thoughts, comments?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm going to do it.
There you go.
Uh, enough speeching down there. We got five here. There you go.
Thanks, Kevin.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, I, I believe, I've worked myself out.
You, you gave your time to Kevin. Never mind.
Couple things. Uh, went to Gary Taylor's retirement luncheon today. I've known Gary a long time. Thirty-two years of service. That, that's cool. Well, yeah, a lot of folks show up that obviously were tickled for him. So, good luck, Gary.
Absolutely.
Happy retirement. Uh, we did have a library ward meeting, um, on, uh...
The Zoom.
The Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay. And I still haven't figured out, I can hear them, they can hear me. They, I can see them, they can't see me. That's, that's really pretty cool. Today, uh, we moved to phase five at the library. Uh, what that, what that's doing is no toys or games, go out of the library. Computers are spaced, and there's a time limit of thirty to sixty minutes. They hadn't really decided yet. They, I assume they decided today. Wi-Fi, individual tables, limited thirty or sixty minutes. And then they took the, the chairs and sofas and stuff out. So, no other seating throughout the building other than the computer stations. They're encouraging people to be in and out within a half an hour. They're encouraging social distancing. The hours have been reduced a little bit, ten to six, Monday through Friday, Saturday, nine to twelve. If you don't want to go in and you want to go pick up a, a book or, they will do the curbside if you request it. They'll bring it out to you. They're not going to, no meeting room rentals for the foreseeable future. Staff will maintain six feet from patrons and wear masks when not behind the desk or in staff areas. And this will, is what they're going to do until our next meeting, which is either the thirteenth, either July thirteenth meeting or August thirtieth meeting. So, that's my report.
Commissioner Lewis?
I really don't have anything except for one for Kevin. On the splash parks, what are they going to open? One thing that was asked.
The splash parks are open. Graham Park is open now. We had a park fail at the North Main Splash Park. It's been shipped. We're waiting on its arrival so we can get it installed, and then it will be open. I would hope later this week, but until it gets here, I won't sign a block.
Thank you. Tabitha, how many fireworks stand permits did we have?
Five.
We had five, really? Wow. Matt?
I've got nothing tonight.
You've got nothing tonight? Okay. Um, a couple of things I had, and I, I too wanted to wish Gary good luck moving forward. He's been a significant part of the city, city staff for a long time. He's going to be missed, so, um, hope he enjoys, enjoys some time off.
There you go.
Just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. We, we had a work session last Wednesday. We didn't really get a chance in the work session to chat about it. I put together, working with David a little bit, uh, put together a list of, had priorities, guys, that we have. And I'll get this emailed out to, or have David email it out. But it was kind of a list of priorities that, that we came up with at our first retreat. And then since then, other things that we've kind of been asking the staff to, to take care of. And, and the list is getting, uh, pretty long. And I think, I think that, um, as we move into budget time now, it's, it's an opportunity for us to do a couple of things. Number one, trying to see where some of those priorities fit just in the general budget. But also, um, I feel like we probably need to give staff, David, um, a little direction on what, you know, the top three or four or five out of this list of maybe twenty-five are, just to dive into first, get those knocked off, and then kind of help him do that. So that, I, I know that, I know that he doesn't want to miss anything that we want done. And I know that, um, we want to get stuff done. So, I, I'll, I'll make sure that David gets that emailed out, something for y'all to review. I had another question about, um, and, and this is kind of, I'm not trying to catch you off-guard, David, when I, when I ask this question, but, um, from a budget perspective, we've been, uh, we've budgeted for some extra, or not extra, for some unfilled police department positions. Now, for a while, we've been trying to fill some positions. Is there a point in the, in the fiscal year that we reach where we say, "Okay, we haven't spent this budget for these four positions this fiscal year?" So, we're close enough to the end of the fiscal year that we just take that money that's sitting there and we maybe think about investing that into some capital outlay for the police department that we know that we have some needs from an equipment perspective there. We could take this year's budget money, you know, say, "Well, the last, you know, we're a month away from the end of the year. We know we're not going to spend it, so, on, on personnel. So, let's look at the police cars. We know we need some new cars. Uh, we've got cars that are really high miles." Conversation came up here a few weeks ago that, you know, in the event of some sort of turmoil where our, our police department doesn't necessarily have all the appropriate gear that they may need in town. We need to fill the positions. We need to find ways to fill those positions. But I don't want to add any more people to the police department if we can't properly equip them. And I've said, back when I was on the, a commissioner, and I've said since I've been here and, and Kurt, the chief of, you know, you and I have talked about this before, I'm not, I'm not going to ask police, our, our public safety departments, police and fire, to go out and do things without the proper resources. And so, I think maybe that's an opportunity. If we haven't spent that, that money and we're getting close to the end of the budget year, maybe we look at some of those needs that the police department has, spend it on that rather than just sitting, sitting on it year after year, not being able to fill those positions.
Yeah, you make up a, you bring up a good point, Mayor. To the extent that we don't spend money in the general fund, for example, and it's, uh, money that was budgeted, that money will just carry over into the fund balance. Um, and it will be available for someone for seeing circumstance or in the event that we save up enough money that we are in excess of the maximum balance target established by local policy. that we are in excess of the maximum balance target established by local policy, then the policy states that we can use that money for one tap purchases. But to the mayor's point, we could actually come up with a plan whereby at certain intervals throughout the year, if we don't have, you know, for example, we have five positions that are currently vacant. And so we might say, you know, at the end of the first quarter, if, or second quarter is the case maybe, if we still have five positions, maybe we take the funds that would be used to pay that, one of those positions, we can use that and, and buy a cop car, for example. And then maybe we wait and then the next quarter, if we haven't filled two other positions, we can go ahead and buy two more cop cars, for example. Because there's kind of two things going on. If we, if we were to fill those positions, let's say, for whatever reason, in October, we have enough people to come in and we fill all five positions, chances are we still have enough money left over in the remaining positions to fully fund those positions for the remainder of the year.
Right, we're only paying for two months of this year's budget in those positions as opposed to paying for 12.
And that way the dollars go to the police department, which is where they were, where they were going to anyway. And then once January 1st comes around, the budget gets reset and we're back to ground, ground zero, so we have five positions and we just, we just keep going like that. So we can, that's definitely something we can look at.
That's just math. I mean, we've figured that.
I mean, it sounds pretty difficult to me, but because it's math, but that's why we hired you. I just, I, I want, yeah. Conversations within the last few weeks about equipment at the police department kind of brought that to light as well. We started talking a little bit at the study session about equipment needs, replacement, equipment replacement, not just for police, but kind of citywide. This is one of those opportunities where we've got money that we've allocated and budgeted for the police department. We're now seven months almost into, into the year, so half that money that we've allocated for the police department for those positions this year can be moved to buy equipment, I mean realistically, because we're not going to spend it on that personnel. So let's get it equipped that they need to do my take. So I guess my, my question to the commission is, can we add to David's priority list here? Can we get an idea from you what that looks like? I mean, if you can bring that to us and show us what the possibilities are.
Yeah, I feel like it would be very simple, I think, to do pretty quick and we can have that ready for the next discussion.
Okay. And then I think long-term, I'd want to look at, I think personally, I'd want to look at other departments and where budgeted positions that have gone unfilled and what, where that kind of, where that money goes. If we budgeted for those positions, some, I know that we've just kind of taken off the rolls and said, we're not going to fill, we're not going to fill it. But if we've had budgeted positions that have gone unfilled, then maybe we take a look at that for, if we've got something, parks and wrecking, there's need there or whatever.
Okay, sure.
We're past you.
We'll come back.
Okay. That's all I've got. Commissioner Badway?
Maybe you guys talked about this Wednesday, where are we with the 150,000 grant money stuff?
Oh, yeah, so we discussed that and I guess if you would answer that.
Yeah, so we've, you know, we're moving forward with the chamber and Jordan is going to work with the chamber and the group that they, they kind of built some guidelines for the chambers grant and work with David, I mean, we're, they're moving forward with that application process and being able to allocate that money in rock and roll.
So that's going to happen here?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to get a meeting together, we're going to get that all lined up and push it out.
And get the money out to the people.
Yep.
Get the money out to the people and all in, all in grant format is what we.
That's what I want, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yep.
Thanks for bringing that up, but it's important, the public notes that we, the city did allocate 150,000 dollars for kind of some COVID relief grants that's going to be administered by the chamber and our city manager. There'll be an application process, I'll get the information out, so be paying attention for that, we'll go from there.
Yep.
City manager's report.
I just have a few, few quick things. So tomorrow, the pool will open, we're for 45 patrons. One might say, well, why don't we open for more? And actually, the big reason why we're not able to open for more than 45 right now is not COVID related, but more lifeguard related due to the number of lifeguards that we have on staff and are, we're still trying to recruit lifeguards, but it's just been, it's just been slow. So we did, we were able to get enough lifeguards hired and trained, we did have a couple of, a few rookie lifeguards that needed to get through training and then a level of field training or pool training, if you will, poolside training. So now we're up to a sufficient number of lifeguards that we can open up for 45, we'll continue to try to recruit additional lifeguards so we can potentially open that up for more. But begin tomorrow, that will, that will occur per session. July 4th is coming up, we don't have another regular meeting before then, so I want to just remind the public that city hall will be closed July 3rd and trash routes will also shift a little bit, so if your trash route is on Wednesday, I'm sorry, Thursday, you'll be moved to Wednesday and if you're on Friday, you'll be moved to Thursday, so get your trash out accordingly for that. And then, good news on the assess valuation front, the county has just let us know that our assess valuation has gone up 6.8%, which is quite substantial. So the current assess valuation of Eldorado is 99.2 million dollars compared to 92.8 million dollars. And so if you take out NRP calculations, one mill is now worth about $96,000 instead of $91,000 from a year ago. So it's quite substantial. And the last thing I have, this is the plaque that the city received from the American Public Works Association Kansas chapter for the 2020 Public Works Project of the Year for Small Cities/Rural Counties Structures for the Sam Vittner Tennis Court Project. Because we've won this for our category, our project is also nominated for the national award as well, so hopefully we, hopefully we can win a national championship. The project, so that's all I have for now.
You're going to get Federer, Djokovic or somebody to come down?
Absolutely, yeah, I can't promise that, but.
We do not have an executive session tonight, so I would consider a motion to adjourn.
I'll move with adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Here's five of them. Thanks, everyone, have a good night.